All right, well, we are live on YouTube. No, that's okay. We're live on YouTube. For the council members, your microphones need to be on. The audience on WebEx will not be able to hear you speaking very well unless you can hear yourself coming through the speaker over here. So as long as you're close enough to make where you can hear yourself through the speaker, then people on WebEx can hear us and anybody that's out in the engine bay would be able to hear us talking. So make sure you're speaking into the microphone. So, all right. Are you on, Linda? Can you see the list? It's not working. Do we need batteries? What type do we need? Those are the people that are on the WebEx app participating. Warren Tillery should be down there somewhere. I can't.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm here somewhere.
Yeah, you're in the bottom. All right. All right, so you're... You just asked. I'm not seeing you. Are you using the meeting room 794? Okay. Yeah, I'm not seeing you on here yet. All right, for now, we've got Cam Reed, Catherine Hartzog, Keith Nelms, Kristy Early, Mary Beth, and Van Knighton. I don't have a last name for Wayne. Oh, Mary Beth's back in the lobby. We have two Mary Beths. And we have Joyce that just joined us. Might be... Oh, Savage, okay. It's okay. All right, well... Wait for Linda to get logged in so she can keep track of people. There we are. Okay. Linda, you may need to make sure your volume is off, just so we don't get any... There might be some feedback, I don't know. So... We're not running too late, a few minutes behind. There, Terry Dobbs has signed in. Okay, I think... Is everybody ready to get started? All right, let's... We'll go ahead and call to order the May 7, 2020 regular council meeting of the town of Tallulah Falls. We will begin with a moment of silence for anyone wanting to keep in mind our current emergency health situation, be praying for the families, thinking about them, and about our leadership and knowing which way we want to go. So have a moment of silence. All right, let's begin with looking at our agenda. We need to approve our agenda. They'll have a motion to approve the agenda as presented for tonight's meeting. Deb makes that motion any second. Craig makes a second. Any discussion, addition? No discussion, all in favor? Vote carries unanimously. All right, we have our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from our last meeting, the water report, police report, fire report, and our financial report. And if there's no discussion about any of those items, then we can... We'll approve all of them in one motion. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Larry makes that motion, second. Craig makes seconds. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, let's move on to our attorney report. Warren, are you...
Yeah, there's really nothing to report for me. I'll just take the items as we get to them under old and new business.
All right, that sounds good. All right, let's... We'll move on to our public property use ordinance. The council got a copy of that last week. I'm guessing y'all were able to get read through that. Did that tick all the boxes that we wanted? Are we ready to move forward with that? And if so, can I have a motion to accept the new ordinance as revised? Okay, do we have a second? All right, do we have any discussion? If you could speak into the mic a little bit, so people can hear you.
Hey, I don't mean to interrupt there, but I couldn't hear Larry.
Okay, let me make sure. Stand by, technical difficulties. I happen to have some in my pocket. There we go.
All right, Larry, let's try it again. I'm just saying, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me for the city that we attempt to be in the camping business and provide a camp location in the middle of a state park that has 120 campsites right across the bridge. It doesn't seem like it should even be an issue or we should even be trying to do that right here behind City Hall. I don't know of any other city that offers a campsite behind City Hall. There's one I don't know about.
Well, this isn't a camping... We're not trying to open a campground. What we're trying to do is offer an opportunity for people to come and volunteer to help the city out. And if they're from out of town, give them a space where they can stay if they need it, because they're benefiting the town at over $600 a week. And it's only costing us a little bit of electricity and water for them to do that. So it's not that we're trying to open our own campground. I think it should... We should be focusing on that it's about encouraging volunteerism in our town, so...
I agree with Larry. I think we're opening Pandora's box by doing this. I think we're exposing ourself potentially in the future for liability... A lawsuit and liability.
All right. Public, if you would like to weigh in, we're gonna... I'm gonna kind of break tradition here and unmute yourselves one at a time if you can. Try not to talk over each other. Hopefully, y'all will be able to police yourselves pretty well on this. So if anyone else has something to say they'd like to weigh in on, please do now. It's your opportunity.
Hello? Dobbs, is this working?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my question, should this ordinance be put into effect? How will the advertising be offered to volunteers or access and that sort of thing? Would it be on the website? I'm, you know, I'm trying to figure out why this is being offered also. Is it with other locations for people to reside nearby?
Yeah, we've got a volunteer page on the website. It's called Volunteer Opportunities, and it hasn't been populated yet, but that would be a great place to advertise for this if we want to open it up that way. Word of mouth is going to travel pretty well. The state park system in the state of Georgia has been doing this for decades, as far as I know, and they don't seem to have too many problems with it. And I don't see why, if the state can benefit from it, why we can't as well.
The state parks are limited to two weeks stay, correct?
No, no, the state parks can stay.
If we send an individual over there.
Yeah, yeah, if we sent someone over.
This is Keith here, if you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
I don't think people are just cruising the Tallulah Falls website. Opportunities, if this is truly actually trying to seek out volunteers, there needs to be an ad budget and there needs to be plans to put it out there in some form of media other than people coming here. Two, if it is truly about trying to get volunteers, I think it should be limited to if you've done it one year, then you're ineligible for another two or three years out, so that we rotate people through, if that's what it's truly set out to be.
So then, once a firefighter has served for a year, he needs to rotate out for a year? Because that... Our volunteer fire department's a volunteer system, too.
Yeah, but those two are unrelated and have nothing to do with one another. This is a camping opportunity, if I recall, the state park limits you to, what, two years? And I could be off on this, but in the past, I had understood that you could do it at a particular park two years, and then you were not able to be at that park again. I think that's how we wound up in this situation. If this is truly about seeking volunteerism as opposed to providing something for some friends, then let's put in the regulation that once you've done it in Tallulah Falls for one year, you're ineligible for two or three or four years, so that we rotate different volunteers in and truly open up the town to a volunteer program.
Okay, well, I think that's something we could talk about if it became an issue or a problem later down the road. I think right now, what we've got's a good way to start. Who's... I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Kristy, okay, Kristy.
What Keith is saying about rotating, I think, is not a bad idea. If we have that number of volunteers that are wanting to participate, then absolutely everybody should be given that opportunity. But it doesn't make sense to say you can't do it again the next year if there's no one else in line wanting to do it. Like, why would we just not have any volunteers because we've limited someone saying that they can't do it? But if there's a line of people who are wanting to have this opportunity, then sure, everybody should be giving that... Have that opportunity. And also, I wonder if Warren can speak to the liability issue of if there would be liabilities for the town or not, or how it would... How that would affect us.
Sure, I mean, the short answer is you can't prevent anyone from suing the town. And so then the question is, would the... Would any claim in a lawsuit have a realistic chance of succeeding? And the general answer on that is probably not. The city has, in some form, sovereign immunity. It doesn't have the same sovereign immunity that a county has, for instance, but in some respects, there are... There is sovereign immunity available. In the event that applied to a particular claim, then it would allow us to get out of the lawsuit by motion, so it would be something that we could handle relatively quickly. The other question in my mind is whether the insurance carrier would cover this, specifically whether it would cover the defense costs for any of it. If it does, then, you know, from the city's standpoint, you insure against it and move forward. The other potential liability, which I think we've addressed in here, is number one, if you are allowing someone to volunteer who is under the age at which you could legally work. There's a little bit different rules for volunteerism, and so we have put in the ordinance that we've tried to... We haven't wanted to chill a 14-year-old, for example, volunteering for the town, because I think there's beneficial life lessons to be learned by volunteering. But what we've said is those volunteer hours don't count toward the minimum number of hours you would have to do to camp. So, in other words, you're not going to have a situation where a family moves in, they put the kids to work, and then that gives them the opportunity to camp. You know, somebody could try to say that this creates an employment relationship or it creates some type of relationship with the town under which they could sue. That's sort of another thing that we've addressed by specifically saying it doesn't create that relationship. And then we've had, you know, waiver form, which I think's actually under the new business, but as part of the application, people would have to sign waivers and releases. So where we stand right now is the liability aspect of it is tied down about as well as it can be. The only other thing to consider would be maybe checking with the insurance carrier to make sure that they're on board with it. But since this has happened before, we just didn't have an ordinance. Having an ordinance and allowing this to happen under the ordinance would be preferable to not having an ordinance and letting this proceed forward violation. So I hope that answers kind of the question on liability, but I'm happy to field any others.
Okay.
I'd like to say that I still see it as a volunteerism opportunity. I think that we need the volunteers in this town. I think if somebody's concerned that it doesn't look good, there's a lot of other places in town we could go around and take photos of that also don't look good, and so I just feel that it's... And it's well-kept, and there's, you know, would be requirements for how they will keep up, you know, the area and people being responsible for themselves. And I just would hate to see us lose the opportunity to have volunteers in this town that truly needs it.
Okay, Kristy, were you able to hear what Deb had to say?
Yes. Yes, I can hear that.
I wasn't sure if it went out, okay. She's my guinea pig. All right, is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Let's take a vote on the motion to accept the ordinance and pass it as presented. All in favor? Okay, we have Deb and Craig for. Those opposed? Larry and Joey. Since there's a tie, the mayor breaks a tie, and I'll vote in favor of accepting the ordinance and enacting it. All right. I'm having a problem with Van. He's not getting audio for some reason. No, there he is. All right. Van, are you getting the audio now?
I... Locked back in.
Okay. Yeah, I can hear you now.
Seven or eight minutes.
Okay. Well, we got you now, so, all right. We need... We may need Van here in a moment. All right, so since we've passed the public property use ordinance, we do have an application and agreement for permission to camp on public property by the Verdinos that would start in June and end in August. I believe y'all have a copy of that. So I need a motion to accept that application. All right, Craig makes a motion. I need a second. Deb, any discussion about this application?
You know, I never got a chance to talk on this.
I'm sorry, who was that? Was that Van?
Never got a chance to have some input. I had a little input regarding this ordinance. I didn't... I didn't get a chance to...
Yeah, go ahead and say your piece, since we had a technical issue. We'll allow that.
I personally think that creating a ordinance for a particular person in a particular situation is not a problem of the city council. Public property is not one of the six zoning districts. The public property you're talking about is in one of the six districts, and there are rules and regulations regarding camping in those districts. I don't know how public property supersedes those guidelines for those districts. And it says in your ordinance that you can reject applications in the future on a case-by-case basis. Does that mean that if the Verdinos fail to come one summer and they, you know, help for help reasons, and then some other person rides up in their smoky old camper and meets all the criteria, the city council can just reject them for no reason? I'd like to ask Mr. Tillery if, you know, if someone were to be rejected for no reason and sue the city, would they have a valid complaint? That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Warren, do you want to...
Yeah, I can take that. So the ordinance provides for an application to be made. The application's required along with the scope of work. There would be a number of reasons why an application may be rejected. I mean, for example, the background check could come back with something that we decide we don't want to allow someone with that particular background to go forward. No different than if, for example, a volunteer came to the city and said, hey, I would like to help out with Founder's Day, but we find out that they're a registered sex offender. We may say thanks, but no thanks. It's really no different with the camping part of it. The other reasons why you may reject an application is, for example, if you have a plethora of people who are volunteering and you run out of work, so that you just simply don't have 24 hours or whatever it is a week worth of work. It may be that particular time or reason or spot to have the volunteerism, so you may reject it on that. Now, I think coming to Mr. Knighton's question in particular there, if we are going to, for lack of a better phrase, cherry pick applications, and we are going to accept or reject them for seemingly no reason at all, then I think, in theory, someone could come back and say there is an equal protection problem in that they are not being afforded an opportunity to volunteer under this ordinance for no reason at all. So I think that in the future, when council analyzes these applications, there probably needs to be some discussion reflected in the minutes regarding why one is going to be rejected, if in fact it is going to be rejected. We don't want to end up in a situation where we are picking and choosing at will for arbitrary reasons that could give rise to some issues. But as it's stated right now, those would be what's called as-applied challenges, which mean that in a particular situation, there could be a problem, but the ordinance as a whole, even though it could be read in a manner that gives rise to a hypothetical problem, doesn't mean that the ordinance as a whole is problematic. It just... It could be applied in a way in which it is. So that sort of cautionary tale going forward on that is that, you know, there needs to be some vetting and discourse regarding the applications, especially if you're going to reject. As far as public property goes, the way that the ordinance is set up is... The ordinance currently in that section, and we'll pull back over to it. the ordinance currently in that section, and we'll pull back over to it. I think it's section five, but. So under, under section 24-15 of the Code of Ordinances, says camping shall not be permitted in the town except, it says no person shall camp in the town except the designated locations. And so that is actually in the municipal offenses and ordinances, not in the zoning code. The zoning code allows camping as a permitted use in three or four different classifications, but the specific language dealing with camping as a permitted use in those zoning classifications says that camping should be permitted on private property with the permission of the owner. We obviously are not private property, but through this new ordinance, we're not creating a subclass of property within a zoning classification. This is clarification on the ordinance related to municipal offenses. So in that respect, this is not a zoning ordinance. I want to be real clear on that, that we did not, have not, and cannot, will not adopt a zoning ordinance.
My opinion, exactly what you're doing. We have a zoning ordinance that addresses these issues. And in this ordinance, those ordinances, the ordinance is a conflict with void. And going back to, you know, I heard you say the more than one, more than once, that if you do it for one, you've got to do it for everybody. If someone drives up, meets all the criteria, passes the background check, and demands to park their vehicle back there to do volunteer work, and the council denies it, they're going to get an ACL attorney and claim discrimination, and that's my opinion.
So you have heard me say it, I've restated again, that if we do it for one, we have to do it for all, but that presupposes the applications are identical. If the applications have valid reasons for which we would want to deny, then there is not discrimination claimed to be made in the sense that the ordinance provides that there has to be approval by the council. So if someone applies and there's a valid reason to reject that application, I think council is still free to do it. If somebody comes up and has nothing at all in their background that would give anybody concern, and otherwise meets all the criteria, and there is otherwise no reason, such as a lack of volunteer work, and the council rejects that application, then under that hypothetical scenario, yes, there could be an issue. And that was why I suggested that there needs to be some vetting of these applications.
Last statement. In my opinion, this is a land use issue. And I agree with Councilman Hamilton that the applicant needs to apply for a variance left of planning and zoning and make a recommendation to City Council to go against. And what I was looking at is Article 5 of Section 509, 510, and 511 of the zoning ordinance, which, you know, specifies what can and can't be done in districts. And what it says is that it would be unlawful to locate a recreational vehicle for more than 30 days annually. So in my opinion, it's a land use.
Okay, that's definitely stuff to continue thinking about and talking about later. Let's go ahead, since we've had our say and move on to the.
If we. By using this process of applications, does that mean that private landowner comes and decides he wants to have somebody camp on his property? Is he required to take applications as well?
No.
No, this is just for public property. So, all right, we have a motion on the floor and we were about to enter into discussion about the application. I don't believe there was specifically.
If we could, Mike.
Go ahead.
Since, look, here's the cleanest way to do this is, since there's at least been technical glitch raised and that, and so we've now had some additional colloquy and comment.
Okay.
I think you may want to entertain a motion, one or two motions, either a motion to reaffirm the adoption of the ordinance or a motion to reconsider the ordinance. Either way, I think that we don't want to just have a comment and then just kind of leave, say we already voted on it.
Okay, let's, can I get a motion to reaffirm the ordinance? Okay.
One comment, it just seems to me we're opening ourselves up for potential litigation. I mean, not to say that it would happen, but it just seems to be unnecessary territory wherein, to me. For that reason, I'm opposed to even attempting to do it. And it has nothing to do personally with the Verdinos at all. I happen to like the people. I just think we're going down territory that's totally unnecessary and asking for potential litigation in the future if somebody wanted to go that route.
Okay, we have a motion to.
And if I could just address that, I mean, Larry, I think you're right, but I think there's some ways to deal with the litigation end up. As the lawyer, I can't. This ordinance doesn't prohibit anybody from suing you. I've just tried to put in a posture that would give you the best defense that I could. But ultimately, it's up to y'all whether you want to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion to reaffirm the ordinance. Do we have a second? Okay, Deb, seconds, do we have any further discussion? Terry Dobbs, you keep unmuting your microphone, do you have something you want to say?
Chair's response or comments from planning and zoning. The applicant is great people. We always need volunteerism, but just look at this long-term, not today. We're talking about putting an ordinance in for long-term and what problems it may or may not cause when we have ample other places for volunteers to resign. That's all.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, those in favor of reaffirming the ordinance as adopted? Okay, Craig and Deb, those opposed? Larry and Joey, there's a tie, the mayor breaks a tie and I'll vote in favor of accepting the ordinance and reaffirming it. All right. So now, moving on, we're going to go to the application. We will, I'll restate whether we need a motion to accept the application as presented with, I'm going to add to that. Have you done the background check? Okay, that it be accepted on the grounds that the background check comes back clean? It's going to have a motion to that effect. Craig makes the motion, do we have a second? Deb, seconds, do we have any discussion?
Yes, if we're going to have camping behind City Hall, I suppose they're as qualified as anybody I can think of. I just think it just seems to be pretty foolish. I mean, we're sitting here spending time and money discussing an application camp spot behind City Hall. The whole thing just seems foolish to me, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, I'm hoping you're wrong. So, all right, anybody else? There's no further discussion. Do we have those in favor of accepting the application for the Verdinos to come this summer? Craig is in favor, one in favor, Deb is in favor. Those opposed? No opposition, two votes abstain. You're abstaining? All right, in the event of a deadlock or a tie, the mayor's vote breaks the deadlock or tie, and I'll vote in favor of the Verdinos' application being accepted. All right, we're going to move on to the blue line solutions. We briefly, we had a presentation a couple of months ago on this. We have someone online, I believe it's Cam Reed, that can answer questions if y'all have any. So the first question is, is this something that we want to entertain and look into enacting? We'll have to adopt a contract, accept a contract with them to be able to move forward. So I'm just, at this point, I'll entertain any motion either for or against. Beginning the discussion on the blue line solution for the speed zone cameras. Okay, we have a motion to move forward with the blue line solutions. Do we have a second? Right as we have this, someone makes a second. Is there a second on accepting the blue line? There is no second. All right. I'm not sure which direction to go on this, let's go ahead and have, that motion dies. Correct, correct. So do we want to talk about it a little bit tonight? We want some more. Okay, dead issue, okay. All right. We'll move on to Habersham Splosh 2021. Y'all should have a piece of paper in front of you. This is the proposal. If y'all look at the, on the right side of that box in that, on that page for the splosh, this is, that is what the towns agreed to last, on the last splosh, the splosh six, I believe they called it. What they did is they came up with a special formula to come up with a way for the three cities being Cornelia, Clarksville, and Tulule Falls to be able to get a little extra help, to kick us up, because we're the ones most impacted by tourism. And splosh is designed to tap into that tourist dollar. All the cities and the county representatives got together several times this year. We talked about what we wanted to do, and we came up with a distribution very similar to this. Tulule Falls is going to come in a little bit under that 271,000, but everybody else would fall within these numbers that you see. Actually, they would actually see an increase. We were the only ones that would see a slight decrease. The county, however, three of the council members, county council members, have chosen to do it strictly on population model only. So they have requested us to submit a project list so that they can begin working on the intergovernmental agreement. In the meantime, Cornelia, Clarksville, Tulule Falls have gotten together, we're banding together, and we are recommending that our councils refuse to sign the IGA. There is no, it doesn't harm us in any way. We're going to get, we're either going to get the by-population percentage presented here, the 94,000, or we renegotiate and try to get more. If we don't sign the IGA, we still get that 94,000. The, we're, the Cornelia is submitting a letter back to the county saying they don't believe they have enough of the population vote in the cities to qualify for this six-year splosh. The way splosh works is you can either do a six-year or a five-year splosh. The six-year splosh can only be done if you have over 50% of the population of the cities in agreement with the intergovernmental agreement. Cornelia doesn't believe that they have that. They don't believe they have that, so they're going to be calling for more negotiations. If the county can't get the intergovernmental agreement, they have to do a five-year splosh, which means they come in way under the numbers that they're projecting here. So Tulule Falls may go from 94,000 on a five-year splosh, from a six-year splosh down to maybe 80,000 on a five-year splosh. So we're still getting cut short if they do, if they go by population only. And we're saying that we want them to do it with a different metric that helps all three cities most heavily impacted by tourism. And right now, we have two council members in the county that agreed with us very strongly and agreed, thought that we need to use a different model, but three council members did not. So my recommendation is that we can, we try to bring the county back to the negotiating table. And that's kind of where we are on splosh right now. So I would need direction from y'all. Are y'all happy with that 94,000? Or do you want to take a stand with Cornelia and Clarksville and one of the other cities that we're working with and see if we can force the county back to the negotiating table?
I'd like to say one back to the negotiating table, just so that they know that the way that it is impacting us. Oh, and there it is.
Warren, do you have any input on this issue about the splosh, the splosh funds?
Yes. I think this may be something for us to have a one-on-one conversation about that's not in public. And the reason for that point being, I've got some advice on how it all plays out, but it's stuff that I would prefer to be attorney-client discussions.
I understand, I'm not that familiar with it, but it's a good idea to accept it as is. Back to the negotiating table, as Deb said. It's going to be interesting hearing your thoughts on it, your plaudits on it.
Let me ask a question on the chart they've got here. Is the 42 million, is that just the portion of splosh that would be Tier Two? Level-two projects, in other words?
Linda may be the better one to come in on that, because I don't know the answer for you.
It does say that that's after removing 5 million for the Tier Two hospital.
Right.
On here, it says something about jail project.
Yeah, I don't think it's supposed to say jail project either. Yeah, this, the 42 million, Warren, is after the 5 million taken out for the hospital bond.
Yeah, but the way that splosh works is you've got your level-one projects that are county-wide, and then you've got your level-two projects that come in after that. And so is the 42 million what's left over? Or what the projection to be left over is after the level ones get funded?
I don't believe there are any level ones in this one. I think they're just, they're just doing the Tier Two hospital, and then is what's left after that.
Well, I guess for present purposes, this may be something we want to have a little more discussion on internally. However, if the options are. However, if the options are, you know, sign an intergovernmental agreement or not, then I'd recommend not for the time being. Mainly because I haven't seen the IGA.
My question would be, how time-sensitive is this? Is something that, how soon does a decision need to be made, and which direction we want to go?
They're wanting us to have the, have our list to the manager, the county manager's office by May 26th so that they can, so that they can write up the intergovernmental agreement. So the question would be, if we're going to do that, we need to come up with our list tonight so I can have it ready to hand in, but if we're not gonna sign the IGA, then there's really no, no purpose in doing that.
I'm not that familiar with it. I would be inclined to follow the lead of the attorney. His recommendation or his suggestion, I would like this, I just don't know what the best direction of would be.
Okay.
Mayor?
Sure.
Mayor, just past experience, our previous went with me, the mayor, and negotiated because they were trying to do the same thing, and we were able to negotiate our cause because of tourism and show that case. But they're very firm on what we've been doing with our money, our town and the region, and what project list, and how does that benefit also? So I think, you know, what y'all are discussing is it's hard to negotiate again and just take your clerk with you and see if you can get it negotiated like we've done in the past. I appreciate y'all's work on this.
Let me say this, for the time being, I don't know that, based on this proposal that's in the packet, I don't know that submitting to an IGA that returns it on population basis alone really advances the ball a whole lot for the cities.
We do have the tourism factor to plug into this scenario, which in the past, as Terry said, that's helped us quite a bit, the fact that we generate a lot of tourism dollars, even though we're a small town with a small population. That has, that has helped us in our negotiation in the past.
Yeah, and in the conversations we've had with the county, all the cities, and Stacy Hall and Phil, oh, what's Phil's last name? Sutton, they were in those meetings with us, and we all came to an agreement among ourselves, the mayors and city managers, that the distribution model that we came up with, that Cornelia helped come up with, was a much better distribution, and we were all, more than 50%, were in agreement with that. It's the county who's turned the tables on us and said, well, we don't care that y'all came up, that y'all all agreed to this, we're gonna do it this way. Which is basically like them saying, well, we don't need your intergovernmental agreement. So, and we're fairly certain that we've got enough people on our side to go back to the negotiating table. So. I just couldn't, I didn't feel comfortable speaking on that matter for the town. I wanted to bring this back to you guys for, you know, do you guys want me to continue moving forward? We can probably put together a workshop. I can get some more information to Warren, and then we can come back together in a week or two and have a little bit more discussion about this and see where we are, maybe an executive session with Warren. Does that sound like something we want to do?
It does, and it does sound like regardless of if we don't sign the IGA right now, that we still need to be working toward getting that list together, just if nothing else, so that when you're in negotiation, you have somebody with you on that basis.
Yeah, the problem that I have is that if we're, if we're looking at that $95,000 number, the county is also putting together a new radio system that will require us to spend nearly $40,000 on new radios. So half our Sploes would be gone just on that one expense alone for public safety. So. So let's, I'll get with y'all, get with the council. We'll schedule a day where we can get together and have a workshop. I'll spend some time with Warren, we'll get some, I'll get him a little bit more information so he understands what's going on, and then we can make a decision before the 26th. All right.
It seems to be that, it's a pretty good approach. I mean, we know what offer we have on the table now, so I was trying to negotiate it up, so we really got nothing to lose by going back for negotiations. Seems like a sensible approach to me.
Okay. So right now, I'm working under the previous approval for me to negotiate for the town. I'll continue to work with Cornelia and Clarksville. I think they're gonna be sending a letter out, and unless y'all have an objection, I'll put my name on that letter, basically saying that we want to come back to the negotiating table. So unless there's opposition to that, I'll just keep working under that previous approval to negotiate. Okay. All right, item E on new business, we need to, in budget situations, we cannot move salary. We can't do anything to salary without council approval. We can shift other monies around within the budget to make up differences here and there. So we had to bring this to you guys, to bring it to y'all's attention. For several years ago, the council approved for $4,000 to be put into the fire department budget to help cover the expense of the firefighters' wear and tear and fuel on their vehicles, responding to fires, going to training, coming to the fire department to help keep the trucks running, things like that. That has been somehow had, over time, had been pushed into the salaries section, which also has created confusion because it makes the volunteers look like they're employees when they're not. So what we're asking the council to do is to approve for us to move that $4,000 out of salaries and into travel reimbursement, the travel reimbursement fund for the fire department. It'll still go to the firefighters for travel reimbursement. What we will have to do as firefighters is present mileage to the clerk for her to know how much to reimburse us for. So. I don't know, I guess I need a motion to make that, make that adjustment to the budget, to amend the budget in that way. Okay, Deb makes that motion. Can I get a second? Joey makes the second. Do we have any discussion?
$4,000, do you think?
Yes. Correct. We're just moving, yes. Yeah, we're just shifting it over. Yeah, that's exactly it. Yeah, we're not adding to it, we're not taking away from it, we're just shifting it so that we can do it in a way that's more proper and meets, meets, meets that need. All right, no further discussion, all in favor? Passes unanimously. All right. We need to talk about extending the moratorium on our, I'm sorry, short-term rentals, while the planning and zoning is still working on trying to pull together some kind of ordinance for us to look at. So, to begin the discussion, let's start with a motion to extend that moratorium another 90 days. Can I have a motion to that effect? Okay, Craig makes that motion. Do we have a second? Right, well, well, right now we have, right now we have nothing. And technically, if you want to interpret the laws that we do have, they cannot do business in a residential one area right now. If we want to allow people to come in and do an Airbnb or a short-term vacation rental, we need to have some sort of ordinance giving us authority to regulate it. And that's what, that's what this moratorium is, is to prevent anybody from coming in right now while we put that ordinance together, while planning and zoning gets that done. And they're in the middle of trying to get that taken care of for us.
When we hear from planning and zoning is that, are they gonna need another 90 days?
Let's. Can I get a second, and then we'll, we'll move into that, the discussion part? Okay, Deb makes a second. Okay, now for discussion. All right, Van?
We have come up with this app, and the only thing we haven't done is we haven't published that draft for the public to see and take comments on the draft ordinance that we, we haven't agreed to, but we, but the draft is not objected to by any of them. So that's the point we're at right now. We just need to publish the draft before we send it on to the city council or send it to the attorney to be cleaned up.
So yeah, they've got a draft pulled together. Before they can present it to council, they have to have hearings first, and that'll take, you know, you have to advertise for that for a couple of weeks, and then the public has to be able to comment on it, and then they'll have something to present to us to then make a decision on. And that's gonna take some time. And so the moratorium would just, just, we would just continue it on for another 90 days while we try to get that process put in place.
Van, how much time do you feel like you need to bring this thing to a conclusion? You know?
I, we just need to publish the draft before our next meeting, which is actually scheduled for next week, and have public comment, and then we can vote on whether or not to recommend that the city council consider this draft. I'm not sure if it should go to the attorney to be looked at and cleaned up before it goes to the city council, but 90 days should be plenty once we get back to meeting.
If I could, so we had a moratorium for planning and zoning to look at this. It's ultimately gotta come to council, but even if planning and zoning approved it all next week, and even if I looked at it the following week, you'd have to advertise it for at least two weeks before you had a hearing. We've already received one anti-Litem notice about it. And so, I mean, I think that something along these lines may take some revisions and some drafting, and, you know, I haven't seen it, planning and zoning has. It may not need much. It may take, you know, for public comment, it may need more, so who knows? But, I mean, I think 90 days is a reasonable, you know, time period. It's rationally related to the objective of getting this thing to a both legal, practical, and sensical conclusion.
Is that your recommendation? Extend it for 90 days, wouldn't you think?
I think that an extension for 90 days accomplishes the objective that originally was in the council's mind when it put the moratorium in effect, you know, some time ago, six months ago or so, which was to just pause while we figured out what we were gonna do about it, anything. And since we're not there yet, and I think the reason we're not there yet is because we've had all of this COVID stuff going on that has prevented some meetings possibly and delayed some things a bit. Should you all choose to extend it another 90 days, I think that is consistent with the decision you made before to have a moratorium.
Is that where it is?
Okay.
So right now, we have any decision made? As far as decisions are being made?
Well, to get the process, get through the process, so. All right, no further discussion? Oh, go ahead.
I appreciate the work that planning and zoning is putting into getting it. I mean, it's something that nobody's ordinances covered. You know, it was an unforeseen development, and so it's time we make sure that we cover it before we, before we have a problem rather than after.
Yeah, and if it hadn't been for the health emergency, we may have been moving forward on this and might not have needed this moratorium to be extended. But it ran out, I believe, late last week, so we need to, I think we need to extend it a little bit further, one more time, and hopefully this will be the last time. So. No further discussion, all in favor of extending the moratorium? Have Deb and Craig in favor of extending it? Any opposition to extending the moratorium? No opposition to, to abstaining, I can't say the word, to abstaining?
I would like to see it already, the city has made on it.
Okay. Okay, so you, are you?
I'm okay with it extended.
Okay, so that'll be three. Joey's in favor as well? Okay, so four in favor. Yeah. All right, well, we'll pass that along to planning and zoning to, and with Linda and my help, we'll try to get that pushed along so we don't have to do another moratorium on this. All right, so that passes. All right, the next item G is, several months ago, is brought up that we may need to look at our sign ordinances. We have two sections. We have one in the zoning section and one outside in our regular ordinance section. It's been my understanding, this is just hearsay because I haven't really dug deep into them, that there are, there may be some conflicts between the two. I reached out to Adam Hazell with GMRC, and he explained a few things about a Supreme Court situation that came up in 2015. There was a decision made that if you have, basically if you have an ordinance that's written that says what can and cannot be on a sign, then you're in violation of the First Amendment. I don't know that ours say that. I haven't, like I said, I haven't dug deep into them yet. This moratorium, if y'all were to approve a moratorium for 90 days on any new sign permits, what we would be doing is we've got two businesses that are empty right now that might have someone come into them soon. A moratorium would stop, would simply pause any sign permits being issued. We could, I think, and I'll let Warren answer this question, we might be able to do a temporary sign permit while we're doing the revision, saying, look, you can put a sign up, but it's not gonna be, it has to meet up to our current regulations, and it's only temporary. In the meantime, Mary Beth Hughes has offered to put back together a sign committee and work with planning and zoning and Adam Hazell, and everybody start looking at this and try to figure out how we need to clean this up, fix it, make it right, get them. He said you need to follow the three Cs when you have sign ordinances. They need to be consistent, they need to be simple to understand, and they need to be compliant with federal and state laws. So that's the only reason this moratorium, I've brought this in was it kind of at the request of Mary Beth and some other people that were concerned about our signs. So. The question is whether y'all think we need to revisit our sign ordinances or not, and that's really the beginning of the discussion. So let's start with that.
We have a sign, it's pretty well self-planned. The potential of conflict, well, about the size of the sign you can have, how far off the ground it can be. Well, about the size of the sign you can have, how, uh, far off of the ground it can be. That sort of thing. In this room of old blue. You know, it's pretty easy to get on. I don't know of a problem that there is with. As it, as it is now. Make a problem. There is. As far as a 90-day moratorium, uh, I have plans for my property. I could develop a plan before now.
Okay.
So, uh, speak with the Irwins, but they will be in the same situation. Those would be the only two places. Definitely in my position. I don't feel like it accomplishes anything. That's hard on small business. I'm certainly not in favor of that.
Okay. Well, uh, one of our business owners was concerned about it, and she's the one that brought it to our attention and wanted to revisit the ordinance. And we would, it would be to, in my, my opinion, would be it, a, a bad situation if we had a sign, that if we needed to change our sign ordinance for whatever reason. Someone was to come in in the meantime, set up a sign, and then it now gets grandfathered in. When, when we need, I, I think we need to at least look at the ordinance and see if we have anything in there that would be unconstitutional at the, at the minimum. We just need to revisit, because this happened in 2015, and y'all haven't revisited the sign ordinance since, uh, the early 2000s, I believe. So I think that at least as a minimum to make sure, get Adam Hazell looking at it and to see whether or not we're in violation of federal, you know, our, our federal constitution. And, and that, if that's all that we need to look at, then that's fine, but there may be more in there. And that would be the concern and the reason for a 90-day moratorium. Like I said, we could easily allow, I think, and Warren, I'll let you answer this, but I think if we do the moratorium, then we could maybe issue a temporary permit to allow people to go ahead and put a sign up so that they understand fully that it's just a temporary sign until we get the sign ordinance fixed.
I believe that'd be fine. Um, if you do enact a moratorium, you want to make a carve-out for, um, well, it's been a while since I've looked at your sign ordinance, but if you are requiring permits for yard signs or things of that nature, this being election season, you want to make sure that it does not apply to campaign sites. The other thing is, you all have two sign ordinances. One's in the zoning code, one's not. Um, they're largely the same, but not identical. And that kind of presents a lot of problems. So at the very least, you'd want to get it in a position where sign ordinance is the same, be it either in the zoning code or somewhere else, but it, I mean, there needs to be a clear, here is the sign ordinance and not, here's two sign ordinances, you know, figure out which one applies. Um, the case that Hazell was talking about is Reed versus the town of Gilbert. And uh, I'm not going to go through it with you because we'd be here all night, but that turned a lot of established law on its head. And it doesn't quite say what I think a lot of people feared it did say. So it doesn't have quite the sweeping effect that we saw going around the country, but, uh, there it sure prompted a whole lot of business to revise sign ordinances and also prompted a lot of business from business owners who were then scrambling to try to assist at the modification of it because the, the fix, if you were, sort of created a free-for-all where there was almost no regulation. And I think somewhere in the middle of that's a happy medium. It's one that, you know, following the 2015 decision, we spent a ton of time on. So there is a way to navigate it. Um, the good news for y'all is I've already done most of the research and digging on, on that particular case. I think it's something in general, a sign committee could do the legwork on. You could have it go through planning and zoning, and I could chime in where necessary. I think the idea of provisional permit provocable upon adoption of a new ordinance, probably a good idea.
So what I'm, what I'm not asking for is, uh, just blanket, no more signs. That's not the idea. The idea is to say, let's do something temporary, let, go ahead and let someone put a sign up temporarily until we get the sign ironed out. Now, if they follow the ordinance as we have it set forth now, chances are when it comes back, back through the process, it'll be, the sign would probably be pretty close to being acceptable, because I don't think we need to change the size or anything else on, on any of the, any of that part of the ordinance. I think we just need to make sure that we don't have something in there that is caught, would cause the entire ordinance to get thrown out in a, in a court case. So. And that, so that's my suggestion is do a moratorium on sign permits, but with the provision that we can, we can issue a temporary permit in the meantime so that you and the, the Irwins could continue to go move forward with y'all's projects. And then put, and in, in conjunction with that, go ahead and get, get a sign committee put together.
I was gonna say, do we know where we are in the formation of the sign committee?
There was sort of one put together loosely.
I knew there was.
Um, I would probably ask, uh, Mary Beth if she'd be willing to kind of pull that back together if she could. I know there are some people that have now, have since moved out of town, their businesses.
Numerous people in the past have discussed that option, the idea of doing, um, a sign ordinance that would require some continuity in signs throughout the city. And I'm not saying I feel one way or another about that. Um, but I don't know if that's part of it, then I would hate to see people spend a lot of money on a sign only to have to redo that sign.
Right.
Afterwards. And I would ask in the very meantime, once this committee is formed, that they are working with new business owners and saying, you know,
Definitely.
Just so you know, keep this in mind.
Yeah. Okay. So. With, sorry, Mary Beth, wanting to weigh in?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're getting a pretty big echo though.
Okay. Okay.
You may have to turn your speakers down on your device.
Everybody else probably should have a mic muted as well.
Yeah, everybody. Yeah, it's, it's a feedback on your device. If you can turn the speakers down, the volume on your speakers down.
Okay, it's all the way down. Is that all right? Can you hear me?
Yeah. You need to try. It's still got a big echo.
Can you hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Now can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
I can hear y'all. I don't know what's going on. I'm sorry. Yes, I will do the sign committee.
Okay. All right, so then I guess the, the she is, I don't know why that, why it's doing that. Okay. She might have. Okay. Let me move this one out in the lobby and see if that corrects it. And yes. All right, Mary Beth, can you try it again?
Okay.
That did it? Okay. So you, you said you'd be willing to put back together the, uh, the sign committee?
Yes, I would be more than willing to do that. Um, some of the people that were on it, as you said, are out of town, but, um, yeah, I'd be happy to get that going so we can quickly do this and, and move forward with it. And maybe, you know, we could get it done quickly and then we could lift the moratorium in less than 90 days perhaps.
Okay. And you'll need to work closely with planning and zoning. So Van, are y'all up for taking on that project as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to ask for a, uh, motion to set in place a moratorium on any new sign permits for the next 90 days with the provision that we, uh, we can issue a temporary permit for anybody needing something in the meantime. Uh, can I have a motion to that effect?
And that we don't have restrictions on political signs.
Okay, and that it doesn't restrict political signs in any way. That's quite a, quite a motion. Do you have a motion to that effect?
I think we can move forward without even considering. I have plans and I actually can take place way before 90 days.
Okay, well Larry, that means that you're, you've got a conflict of interest on this matter.
I had a briefly about the Irwins. I would say they won't appreciate a signed moratorium going in place while issues we're talking about primarily only affect cell. The city is down here running around trying to fix the sign ordinance. That, that seems a bit discriminatory to me. Discriminations. Go down that.
Okay. If you want to talk about discrimination, I can start talking about the things that being done illegal that aren't, aren't, aren't being taken care, that aren't being addressed because we're looking the other way. So like someone camping in your front yard for two years. We'll go down that road? Okay. We'll go down that road another. We'll, we'll, we'll go down that road another day. All right, so I'm, I'm asking for a motion. Is there no motion? If there is no motion, then that kills it. Someone.
Go any further with this. That being the case, then I think I will, uh, submit an application effective immediately for a, for a sign permit on my property. Signs on it as long as anybody in this room has been alive. You know, that way I've got my sign permit, I can move forward with my business. Right now, immediately.
Okay.
And then you guys can do whatever you want to with, uh, sign or, uh, permit or whatever you want to do. I only suggest that you contact the Irwins before you make too many changes.
Okay, so we have no, no motion? Okay, do we want to, uh, can I have a motion to go ahead and put a sign committee back together in the meantime, try to get stuff worked out?
Yes.
Okay, Deb makes that motion. Can I get a second? There is no second, so the motion dies. All right, then we do, our sign ordinance is going to stay as is. All right, um, I have no comments. Are there any public comments that we need from, from our, uh, visitors before we go into executive session?
It'd be nice if we can revisit that sign ordinance at some point in time. This was Keith.
Yeah, thank you, Keith. Um, yeah, this was actually brought to our attention by Mary Beth several months ago. This is not something that I brought up. She reached out to me a week or two ago, asking if we wanted to, to revisit that again. So that's why, that's why this came back up. There was no personal attack against anybody out there. So any more comments from the public about anything, not just the sign ordinance?
I have a question. Um, part of the reason as far as no comments as far as blue line was I did not see Tanya here. Can we basically bring that back up at the next council meeting and have her talk through her intent again?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, we can bring that back in. Okay, let's do that.
And I do think that with the sign ordinance, we do need to make sure that we are not in violation and that we don't open ourselves up to liability, since that's a big issue on the table.
Right.
By having illegal sign ordinances.
I understand that, but I'm seeing that no one's brought anything specific.
Okay. Okay. This sounds reasonable. Um, when the, the reason this got thrown in the last minute was because she reached out when she saw the agenda packet, which went out Thursday. And I just, I told her I'd at least put it on the agenda for us to, to at least discuss whether we wanted to go down it or not. I can continue looking at it and digging into it and see, and then come back to you guys next month and, and if y'all want, and say one way or the other, whether we have a violation. And Adam Hazell has said he will read through it. That's what we're paying him for. He said, please send it to us, let us look through it, we'll tell you. And that may be the simplest solution right now. So, all right. Any, any further comment from the public before I, uh, move y'all all out in the lobby? No comment. All right. Uh, thank you guys for putting up with us. I know it's kind of touchy and had some problems. I'm really glad we were able to, to show that public comment can be made without people having to be physically present and that y'all can still contribute to decisions being made in the town. So right now I'm going to move, we need to, I need a motion to move into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Joey makes that motion. Do we have a second? Second by Deb. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, we're going to, we're going to, into executive session at this time. Let me move all these people into the lobby. I do this. All right. Yeah. Able to move some of these people in the lobby for some reason. Hold on. Maybe my lobby's full. All right, for those of y'all still, still on, I'm going to have, probably have to expel y'all. So it's not letting me just move you simply into the lobby. So if you get disconnected, uh, please try signing back in and we'll see if we can't get you in after the executive session. Nope, won't let me expel either.
Okay. We can leave peacefully.
Okay, please, please do.
Bear with me, I'm trying to figure out the X of this thing. Hold on.
Okay.
I don't know how.
Hit the X.
I found it. I found, I have to actually confirm it up here. There we go. Did you unplug that speaker out there? All right. All right, Warren, it should just be us.
I want to make sure YouTube's not simulcasting.
Thank you for that. You're.